Putting time out.
Oh, gosh. Calling to order the meeting tonight for the Town Council on June 20th, 2016. Like to do the roll call, please.
Okay, Mayor Kous is not here. Mr. Fritzen?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McBride?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz is not here. Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
And Ms. Gaines.
Here. And let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we go along tonight, we're going to vote on our omnibus vote agenda, and that means we're going to vote on all of these in consent form unless anybody wants to pull anything. Mr. Fritzen?
It asks to be excused from voting on the Bloomington Offset Bills.
Thank you.
I'd like to be excused from voting on the WGLT bill.
Thank you.
I'd like to be excused voting on any bills. I incurred my duties as councilman.
Okay. Is it raining? It's raining. Wow.
No approval. Second?
Okay. Before we have any discussion, if there is any, the things we'll be voting on tonight are the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of June 6th, 2016, the approval of Town and Normal expenditures for payments as of June 15th, 2016, the resolution accepting the low bid and authorizing a contract with Henson Robinson Company for the replacement of low-slope roofing systems, say that fast 10 times, at the Normal Theater and Community Activity Center in the amount of $186,409, approving an associated budget adjustment to provide for the higher-than-expected project cost as well as a 10% recommended contingency. Resolution to accept bids and awards, a contract to start excavating in an amount of $146,000 for the reconstruction of portions of the Pine Street right-of-way and the parking lot for the 305 East Pine Street property. Resolution rejecting bids for the Normal Theater house lighting project, upgrade project, excuse me. Resolution to accept bids and award a contract to start excavating, Inc., in the amount of $483,352,035 for the improvement of Virginia Avenue from University Street to Franklin Avenue. Ordinance conditionally and partially approving the final plat of the Lipic subdivision, 5th addition, by expedited process, 103 West Poplar. Ordinance amending parking restriction in the 800 block of Broadway Avenue in the Town of Normal. Ordinance establishing prevailing wage rates. The ordinance amending Section 25.16-3 of the municipal code of the Town of Normal regarding fees for parks and recreation programs. And ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for the purchase of the property at 222 Heiser Drive for $25,000 and authorizing the donation of that property to Habitat for Humanity of McLean County, Inc. May we have any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Fritzen?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye. And that motion is approved. We have no general orders tonight, so we're going to skip to the new business. And our new business is a presentation by representatives of the Town of Normal and Illinois State University, and it's pertaining to the recent International Town Gown Association Conference that was held in Chicago on June 5th through the 8th. So, thank you for coming forward. I think we have Heather and Harriet, so.
Yeah, let me just, by way of introduction, again, Heather and Harriet worked very closely together coordinating a number of Town ISU programs and activities, and we were, both organizations were pleased to have sent a number of staff members to this conference in Chicago in early June. Again, there were several members from the town staff, including administration, inspections, planning, and police, and the same for Illinois State University had several staff members attend. And it was really, I think, they have a good story to tell. We were selected, this group was selected to deliver four presentations to the attendees at this conference. I think there were upwards of 400 or more from throughout the world, really, mostly from the United States. And so, we thought it would be appropriate to share some of the information that was provided at that conference with you, but also, I think they're going to share some reaction that they received from other attendees. So, thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for the opportunity to talk about the International Town Gown Association. I want to acknowledge, as we move through the slides, you'll see who from Normal and ISU did presentations, but I do want to acknowledge the folks that are here tonight, Greg Tremmel and Mercy Davison, in addition to Heather, who did presentations. And then, I want to acknowledge Dr. John Davenport, who's our Dean of Students, who also did a presentation. Normal and ISU have been members of ITGA for three years now, and two years ago, Heather, John, and I had an opportunity to travel to Clemson, North Carolina. That was the first time ISU and Normal had jointly sent a delegation to the conference, and we all had a great experience, and we took back a lot of ideas to our community and to our campus. But what we also learned from that experience is, you know what? We're doing some great stuff here, and we need to be telling the world and these other communities and other campuses about the work that we're doing. And so, that's been an important goal for me, is to put Normal and ISU and our great relationship on the map in terms of town gown relations. And so, that was truly my intention. When we learned that this year's conference is going to be hosted in Loyola Chicago, the proximity was a great opportunity for us to submit a number of proposals and have a larger delegation. So, we had nine staff members total between ISU and Normal that attended or presented at the conference. We submitted seven proposals in January, and we had four of them accepted. And so, Heather is going to start talking about what content we shared at the conference.
Great. As Harriet mentioned, we had four that were selected. And so, I've got a list up here of the ones that we did present upon and who from both the organizations presented. We're going to briefly just acknowledge what we spoke about during that time. We promise that for each of the 45-minute presentations, we will not give you a 45-minute presentation. So, Mercy and I started talking about planning for town gown success. As you all know, there's a lot that we do with ISU, a lot of it because of them being our community and being so close in proximity. We're very close that even at times, I think, we're not really sure sometimes which land parcels belong to which organization, as we found during our land swap a little bit. But we really, it was a great opportunity to tell our story about what we're doing and show, you know, how we continue to integrate ISU into our plans. We discussed Uptown Normal and what we do here as far as the space we share with ISU, such as the university galleries, the Normal Theater, when they held classes there for ISU, the office space that is located above the CVS or in the CVS building, and then the other kind of events we have for homecoming, the holiday lighting ceremony, just how we try to figure how we can make Uptown Normal and Normal an extension of ISU for the students. Additionally, we discussed Planet Normal and the comprehensive plan that we went out to the campus to try to get the students' input, so we knew as we were planning that we weren't just planning for the permanent residents, but also for our students that are here four years during their lifetime and hopefully longer. We discussed the land swap, which I mentioned, when we first got to the conference, there was another organization, another university town gown that won an award for their land swap of two parcels. And I was kind of kicking ourselves, thinking, wow, we did that too, but with more parcels. So, it's a big thing. You know, that doesn't happen a lot in places. So, it was a good story to tell. We also talked to them about the Main Street beautification, not only the work that we're doing with the Redbird street signs and the water tower and trying to make that a gateway for our students, but also that we are working closely with IDOT to try to get that Tiger grant to make it a better place for pedestrians and students and safer for all of the people that are walking, that we're really, you know, taking that seriously. And then, we discussed a lot of the parking and redevelopment and zoning that we do around the campus. As you know, there's a lot of changes we've made over the years to make it easier for students as well as for our developers, so we have better housing, things in place for our students. So, that was a really good presentation with positive feedback. And then, Dr. John Davenport, Greg, and myself then spoke to the organization about enhancing neighborhood livability through town gown relations. The main thing that we touched upon during this was our Neighborhood Action Team. Many of you are familiar with our NAT team, as we call it, which began in the early 90s. And we have university and town representatives from lots of different departments, and we all meet once a month for an hour to two hours, depending on the time of year, to really discuss issues that are going on with our students and with our neighborhoods. We look at issues that may happen between parties, noise violations, landlords. It really gives us an opportunity to try to be in front of the issues that could present themselves, so that as our students are interacting and living right next door to several residents, that we're making that relationship better for everybody, really trying to let the students know that although you are a student and you go to ISU, you're still a resident of Normal. And although you may live in a house with eight people, the person next to you might have three kids who are going to school and going to work. It's been a really good proactive way that this NAT team can go out and try to get in front of these issues before they start. And between our organizations, especially Harriet and Greg, who have really taken the lead on the NAT team, we're seeing just amazing work in progress with both the students and the neighborhoods. They're going out to students ahead of time, just saying, you know, we've had issues with this house in the past, may not have been you, but let's talk about what we can do in the future. We were also talking about how it's, where they're living, even though they're off-campus, is an extension of their code of conduct. So, what they do off-campus also affects what's happening to them at ISU, which we have found usually is a bigger concern for them than the fines they may receive from the Normal Police. And really, it gives us an opportunity to go to neighborhood associations to listen to their concerns, so that they understand what we're trying to do jointly, that we're taking their concerns seriously and trying to work with the students. So, we've really found in the short amount of times that, you know, the little things that you do, the letters that are being sent, really great work is being done, and it's a really good model for other organizations.
Janice Blair, who is a staff member in our Student Conduct Office, along with myself and Sergeant Kapczynski, offered a session called Large-Scale Parties, Can They Be Stopped? And this is, you know, this kind of thing around neighborhood livability and alcohol and noise is a perennial topic for ITGA. And it is something that most every campus community is dealing with. Only when all of your students live on campus do we see that communities don't have a problem with those kinds of things. We frame this conversation around some activities that happen in Normal, have happened or do happen in Normal pretty regularly, what we call underground traditions, so something like Cherry Stock or Around the World. And so, we're talking about large-scale parties, over 100, sometimes 500. And we shared at the conference what was the police process for identifying the potential for this kind of party, the mechanisms that they use for identifying these parties, and then the process that the police and the university use to educate students. We don't approach this as a, students don't do this. We really approach this as an educational process, where we can help students to understand that there is, there's a way to do this. There's, through the mass gathering permit and some other ordinances, we want to educate students, but we also want to help them to understand that with the large volume of people, the additional risks that come with noise, property destruction, violence, those kinds of things. So, we shared our proactive method for bringing in students and including landlords in that conversation to decrease the number of large-scale parties that are being held in Normal. The other presentation that we did, Janice, myself, and Sergeant Rob Cherry from Normal Police Department, and Effective Intergovernmental Agreement and Tiered Strategies for Off-Campus Behavior. That's a mouthful. So, we shared the intergovernmental agreement, we talked about the intergovernmental agreement that Normal Police and ISU have. We call it an IGA. Many communities call it a memorandum of understanding, but that's also a very, a town gown world. So, we spent some time talking about key concepts, how that's developed, how that's reviewed for our institution, our community. And then, we also shared what we've developed over the last three years. We call it, we call it a tiered intervention process, and this is primarily through NAT, through the Neighborhood Action Team, that we have developed three levels, letters, face-to-face surprise meetings, and a serious sit-down meeting, to quickly summarize how we do it. And we use data to identify potential problem properties before students are in our conduct system and before they have truly disrupted the neighborhood, that we look at patterns and say, we see some behavior that's becoming concerning for us, and we want to nip that before it becomes a problem. But again, we're also wanting to educate students about helping them understand that they are citizens in this community and the responsibilities that they have. And we have several years of data on the effectiveness, and we do that both proactively and sometimes reactively, based on incidents. I would also point out that this tiered strategies, recently Greg Tremmel, Greg Leopold, Amanda Street, Janice Blair and myself, were recognized by the Division of Student Affairs for innovation by a team as a result of that initiative. And so, that's something that we're very proud of. So, what we took away from the conference as a whole, beyond our own presentations, first and foremost is celebrating the success that we have as a community and as a university. And so, I've put up on the slide a few specific things and a few broad concepts that stood out for us. First, ISU's student code of conduct does extend off-campus, and that is significant. And that is, not, having that is removing a barrier that many communities struggle with if the code does not extend off-campus. So, some campuses' attitudes are, they're off-campus, not my problem. And so, this is significant for us that we have that. The relationship between the police department and the ISU conduct staff is really key. Those folks are talking every single day, and that level of communication, we always knew that was great and effective, but when you get to be around folks doing the same work and you see that there are communities and universities that do not have that kind of contact, it reminds you how great your relationship is. The inspections Department's annual housing inspection program is also significant, particularly because it's allowed great development of relationships with all of our landlords. And that has, those relationships that inspection has, particularly Greg Tremmel, has also, you know, that has benefited ISU in terms of our relationship development with the landlords as well, and has led to bi-annual meetings through NAT with many of the landlords. And also, is a mechanism in place to ensure that our students are safe. And then, finally, our Neighborhood Action Team. And one of the most important features in a town gown relationship is some kind of town gown committee, commission. And so, we have that through NAT, but it also gives us a space monthly to jointly discuss concerns, questions, and again, identifying those, that data and the patterns in the neighborhood where there are issues, so that we can proactively address those, and so that everyone in our community can be happy and enjoy Normal. More broadly, I can't say communication enough, and we're doing a great job at that. It's, you know, some of what makes us feel great from the conference is hearing some horror stories from some other communities. And to hear that, because two people don't get along, or an incident happened in the past that has become a barrier, is disappointing to hear, but also glad for us to know that we have excellent communication across many, you know, all of our departments in both organizations. And it's something else that is significant is the administrative support, that both the mayor and the president oftentimes are present at events together. And as simple as that sounds for us, that is very unique for some university communities that, you know, comment, wow, your mayor and your president go to things together or appear to things, at things together. But not just appearing at things, but we have the support, we have the support from Mark, we have the support from our Dean of Students, to continue to do these kinds of activities, some of these different programs that Heather will speak about, and to continue to explore what can we do to enhance and continue to grow our relationship. And so, that is tremendous. And then, generally, the consideration that we give each other in all of planning, in all aspects of planning, that we recognize that we have an interdependent relationship.
So, we also learned, not only to celebrate our successes, but we obviously need to look towards the future. And although we are doing a lot of really great things, there's more that we can do. So, these are just kind of a few bullet points, just to touch on what we've already started to think about for the future. As you know, we're having our first joint celebration in July with representatives from both the Town of Normal as well as ISU. And this really just gives us an opportunity just to educate internally what all we're doing, because we do think there are a lot of people, even at our organizations, that are one small part of it and don't realize what everybody else is doing. So, this is one way just to continue to grow our plan and our partnership. And then, we'll continue to offer our shared programs that we have been doing for several years now. Our Off-Campus Welcome Back, where we deliver bags to 2,500 students, many of you have been a part of that. Our I Am Normal campaign, where we meet with students during the Sweet Corn Festival to remind them that although they are college students, they're also citizens of Normal. Our Homecoming Lighting Ceremony, which has proven to just keep growing every year, the simple lights in Uptown, the amount of responses that we get are huge for that. And that's something that came out of our Redbird Pride Committee and just the partnership we have there. And then, our Town Gown Meet and Greet, which we've seen, gives students an opportunity to come and meet with you, as well as department heads, to ask the questions, to try to be more informed and more engaged with local government. And we'll continue to do the things that Harriet has talked about. We'll continue to plan together and to think about what we can do, you know, if we have another water tower that's coming up for painting, you know, maybe it needs to have a Redbird on it. You know, it's little things like that that we kind of chuckle at, that other communities look at us like, wow, that is really cool. And the little things like that, we'll continue to think of each other and as we go forward in planning. And then, we'll keep those lines of communications open. We see that there's a lot, I mean, I still remember last year just getting a call from our Public Works Department saying, you know, we need to close down a street during preview. Can we let somebody at ISU know? That sounds very simple, but there are a lot of communities where the organizations would say, you know what? It's our street. We're going to close it. Doesn't really matter what you think. But this gave us an opportunity to be proactive in how we rerouted our students and their families when they were coming to preview. So, we'll continue to communicate and only get better in that aspect. And then, the nine of us that went to the conference, we have a meeting scheduled in a couple of weeks where we just want to debrief on everything that we heard. We've given you a really brief overview of the comments we had, but there's a lot of specific things that we gained from our conference, both on the positive and the opportunity side. And we want to just talk about what does this mean for our future? What are the pieces that we learned from this conference that we can take away to only make our partnership better? And we want to do that while we still have it top of mind. So, we've got a lot of plans for the future, and we're excited, and want to thank you again for all your support that you always give us, because you, as we talked about, our administration support, administrative support, we couldn't do these things without you and without the university. Thank you very much.
If you have any questions. Comments, questions?
Just one, is, are the, is the conference, is there anything online if we did want to see or hear more of your 45-minute presentations or whatever?
We can, we'd be glad to share, all of the presentations were PowerPoint, so we'd be glad to share all of the PowerPoints with you.
But they didn't record them or anything like that, but we can definitely share the full PowerPoint if you'd like them.
Just as the Illinois State employee who is up here at the table and also an alum, and I know I'm not the only alum at this table, and obviously, as a citizen of the Town of Normal, it's, I'm just very, very proud, not surprised, but very proud to hear that both of our entities are at the forefront of these issues nationally, and we should all feel very good about that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy, anything? Mr. Preston?
Thanks again. I'll echo Mr. McBride and other comments, praising you guys and the town gown relationship that we have had. I'm glad to see in this presentation that we've had focus and success teaming up together, both looking at maybe some of the opportunities for improvement with students, interacting with the Town of Normal, but also, you know, I'm a big believer that our student population here in Normal are just as much as a resource as anything else. And the student population makes up roughly one-third the whole population of Normal, and very, very grateful for that. I have very fond and vivid memories of not too long ago being a student on campus. And I'm wondering, through any of these sessions that our contingent did not lead but attended, were there any other opportunities that struck either of you that kind of feed into the idea of connecting the student population more into the Town of Normal or into the community, similar to what we're doing with the Off-Campus Welcome, the Meet and Greet, those kind of things? Anything else? Best practices that came, really got either of your attention at all that maybe is an opportunity for us to look at?
I don't know that there was any one particular session that, you know, I went to, a lot of what I go to has to do with off-campus services, because that's directly my job. And there wasn't anything that I went to that I said, let me take this whole presentation and let's start doing it at ISU. I think, attending the conference for the second time for me, it was sort of little nuggets of ideas here or there, hearing what an institution is doing and seeing how we can adapt that for the unique, you know, I think every campus and community is unique, and so, finding the way that it fits with our community. I think one of the plans that the Dean of Students' Office has is, our I Am Normal campaign has really, it has taken off more than I ever could have dreamed of. And what was, you know, just one weekend at the Corn Festival is now going to be, including the Corn Festival, four different activities to each semester. So, besides Corn Festival, the others will be on the quad likely or on campus. And so, I think that's, you know, one of those that I've kind of drawn away from the conferences, how we can expand that. That kind of messaging about students being citizens is important.
And we've, and I think we've talked some to, actually, I remember this from the last conference, of the low-hanging fruit, or one of the things that we're already doing that we could tag-team together. You know, even we've, Joe Tully and I have spoken some with our, with the students that are, with the groups that are organizing, organizing the Welcome Back Week and that kind of thing, to see what more we can do on in Uptown, whereas a lot of times, a lot of those things get planned on campus. We've had some conversations about what can we move to kind of bring them into the community a little bit more, so we're not necessarily reinventing the wheel and, you know, getting a new, you know, having a new event that we're starting, but how can we kind of reframe it a little bit so that it's still ISU-focused, but also Uptown and Town of Normal-focused? it a little bit so that it's still ISU-focused, but also Uptown and Town of Normal-focused? So I think we need, you know, look at some of those, like I said, the low-hanging fruit that's already there and we're doing well, but how can we make it better to kind of integrate the two?
Great.
I think that that is, I mean, that's a great summation of, I think, the theme, right? We went, and we know that together we're doing very well. What's the next step to make us great?
Thanks. Keep it up. Thank you.
Just a couple of comments. I think Heather, you said that sometimes the little things that really make a difference. And one little thing I just want to point out to the council is that a few years ago, you all took kind of a tough vote, and you committed a large amount of money to the university to help fund a scoreboard at the football stadium, which I personally have enjoyed on many occasions. It's a beautiful scoreboard. But you may or may not recall, the university asked the town, "What do you want? You want like a suite or something like that?" And our official answer was, "No, we don't want anything. We would like to see on the scoreboard something occasionally 'Welcome to Normal,' just to remind people where they are." Well, the university, I assume that was the impetus behind it, created a little intro video, if you will, that's now played at not only football games, but basketball games, "Welcome to Normal," and it's got some images of the community. And I think, you know, they are proud that they're part of this community. And that's, I've been here 28-plus years, only Mr. Fritson's been up here longer, but I've been able to watch this transformation. And there was a time, many years ago, where I don't think the university really acknowledged that they were part of the community, they were more of an island. I remember going to watch, on many occasions, the state of the university addressed by the president, and the president never even mentioned the community. And that has changed dramatically. And it's been a slow evolution, but it has changed dramatically. And I firmly believe the relationship between the town and the university has never been stronger. But I also am excited, because I think we just scratched the surface of what's, and I'm delighted to hear Heather and Harriet talk about that a lot, "We can do better." It is great to be a national leader, and it's really heady to go to these conferences and people are saying, "Wow, how did you do it? You know, how did you develop this relationship?" Well, it comes from leadership, and I mean, I credit the Board of Trustees at the university, the president's office, but all the way down through the organization, I see it today, and it wasn't always like this, but if we need something, they bend over backwards to try to work with us, and I think, I hope we do the same, because that's the way we feel. But we're really, I feel like we're on the same page, we're moving in the same direction, and if we can continue to do that, it's a powerful relationship. There's really so much we can accomplish as a town gown community if we're working together. And I really feel that we are, and I do believe that there's more we can do. I think we can seize upon this momentum and just let's push the limit and see what else we can do. And so I'm excited by that, and I certainly am going to commit myself to support those efforts to expand upon what we've already achieved. And maybe the next conference we go to will really blow their socks off when we talk about some of the things we have going here in Normal with our university. So, and thanks to everybody else. Greg attended, Mercy, we had some people from our police department. It is an organizational effort. Rick is here, certainly Rick and Chief Humor have been very instrumental in working closely with the university. So it is an organizational effort, and I'm excited that we're moving in this real exciting direction. And I'm glad we're giving this some exposure, because a lot of people, you know, these things are happening, and many people don't even know about it. But in fact, I learned a couple of things today that we're doing, "Gosh, I forgot all about that. That's great." So we need to keep up that good work, and I think we will.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I echo my colleague, Mr. McBride's comments. Not surprising, but very enjoyable, and don't have much specific feedback, because I think my counterpart did a great job. But I did want to share, Mr. Fritson and the mayor and I were at the Congress for New Urbanism Conference last week, and I happened to talk to two planners from communities that also had universities. And we were talking about our Uptown development, and that there was a university gallery, actually, in a town-owned building in the center of our Uptown, and they're like, "Wait, what?" And they were stunned about how close the relationship was. So kind of just to echo the feedback that Mr. Peterson just said, and also that I was in one of the community partners' breakfasts, and to hear Dr. Dietz get up and in his 10 points of pride that the Town of Normal, actually, our Uptown and the Town of Normal and the relationship and the quality of development we've done, made his top 10 of points of pride for Redbird, says a lot about where the university's focus is and the status of our relationship. So I just wanted to add that as well. Thank you.
Well, I just too wanted to add, thank you for everybody who went and all the work. Everybody puts in a lot of effort. I too have been kind of one of the old-timers, that when I came on, things weren't always so hot between Normal and the university. And it almost seemed like it was very incremental, and almost yearly, you could see things move forward. And it is so exciting, because I mean, it went like this, and all of a sudden went boom! You know, so it really started moving. And I'm hoping somewhere that we have some of how all of this is being done, some of the things that's accomplished, memorialized in writing, so that someday, somebody can come back in if they're saying, you know, "We'd really like to see some of the beginnings, and how did you get there?" If there could be something like that, not to cause a bunch of work, but I just think it could be really good historically, as well as just everyday helpfulness to other communities.
We do have some of that. We actually, Greg Tremmel primarily pieced some of that together this spring. Greg Tremmel, Greg Leopold, Janice Blair and I also did a presentation for the Division of Student Affairs that was more broadly, kind of all of those topics put together for our Division of Student Affairs Conference. As part of that, we wanted to share some of the history. And for about a year in our Neighborhood Action Team meetings, we've always been speculating as to when did NAT start, and so Greg did some digging, and we have some bulleted points that really, the beer riots are, you know, sort of one of, a massive incident that then caused the town and the university to start communicating. And the first version of a town gown committee was formed in 1985 and has evolved since then.
Thank you. Thank you. That's great. Yeah, it's been wonderful to watch. So thank you, everybody. So that brings us to concerns. Anybody have anything that we need to share or want to share? Yes, Mr. McCarthy?
I just wanted to thank everybody who was involved in the music event this past weekend, although I was out of town already. I've received feedback from three Town of Normal residents about how much they enjoyed the weekend. So if you had a hand in it, thanks very much for everything that you did. Clearly, it was a hit.
Okay. Anybody else?
Couple of quick things. Thank you. I was going to mention that to Adam Fox, who's our Theater and Civic Arts Manager, was the primary coordinator, but he was supported by Heather and Joe Tully. And it was a great event. I was able to get out to a couple of the venues, and it's free. I mean, it's a great thing, I mean, it's free, it's great music, and I did talk to Adam late afternoon, and he said things had gone very well. Lots of positive feedback from the musicians, who appreciated the opportunity to perform, and they appreciated how well it was managed. And of course, lots of positive feedback from some of those that came out to enjoy the music. So it is a neat event. I got to give Mayor Kous credit for bringing this thing to us a few years ago. He came in with this idea, and I was a little skeptical, and like, "Wow, this sounds like a lot of work." And it was a lot of work. It is a lot of work, but it's really worth it. I think it's great, and I think it will become a tradition that we'll look forward to every year, and is starting to become that already, just after a few years. So I also want to just acknowledge Chris Cotton, this is his last council meeting. He's had a short stay here, but we've enjoyed having you here, Chris, and we wish you nothing but success in your future endeavors. So thank you and good luck.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? Do I have a motion adjourned?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Fritson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Gaines?
Aye. The motion is carried, and we are adjourned.